Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Londonderry Town Council meeting for January 6, 2020. And happy new year to everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing, as is our tradition, especially in these trying times in our country. Please pray for all those who are out protecting our nation. Ladies and gentlemen, we always start our meetings with public comment. If there is anyone here this evening who would like to address the council, please come up and approach the council. Just come on up. Hi, excuse me. You have a seat right there? Okay?
Forgive my unfamiliarity.
No, no worries. No worries at all. You just will need your name and address. So your name?
My name is Jada.
Jada?
Jada Bernard.
And what's your address?
It's 403 Hammerhurst in Nashua.
In Nashua?
Yes.
Okay, so our rule here is you have five minutes.
Okay.
And then I can extend it at the prerogative for the council.
Okay.
So please feel free to make your comments.
Okay, I probably won't take that long. I just prepared to come in and share with you a little bit, tell you who I am. I'm Jada. I was growing up in Louisiana. And David Duke was a grand wizard in the Ku Klux Klan in Louisiana. And he was also a member of the State House of Representatives. And he was desperately trying to get into higher office. In 1991, he ran for governor, and he lost. And today, the Ku Klux Klan is a despised group in America, and they hold no official power, no official political power. But the KKK of India has held power there for the last five years. And India's KKK is called the RSS. The RSS is responsible for lynchings, bombings, assassinations, pogroms against Christians, Muslims, and anyone who stands up against its xenophobic agenda. The RSS also groomed people like Prime Minister Narendra Modi to take office. And I understand that might seem a little removed from New Hampshire. But Tulsi Gabbard is actually campaigning very hard here in New Hampshire, and she wants to be America's next president. And she doesn't want New Hampshire voters to know that the RSS actually helped her to get into Congress. She doesn't want you to know that she took hundreds of thousands of dollars from RSS activists. She doesn't want you to know that she repeatedly spoke at RSS events in America and in India. She doesn't want you to know that the RSS spokesperson was hosted at her wedding as Modi's special guest at her wedding in Hawaii. And I know we've all heard of how Hillary Clinton accused her of being a Russian asset. However, Fairness and Accuracy in Reporting, which is a national media watch group, called the Russia accusations a distraction from the reality that Gabbard's most troubling attribute is her documented connection to the far-white Hindu nationalist movement known as the RSS, the parent organization of India's ruling BJP party. And like I said, she wants to hide her relationship with the KKK of India. And I think that the New Hampshire voters need to ask her about the RSS and her ties. Actually, I love the way that her campaign has been set up. Last night, at her town hall at Dartmouth, I actually was there and was able to pose a question. And I posed a question about specific ties and a specific event that she spoke at in 2014. I gave names, and I was able to ask that right there in front of those voters and give her a chance to respond. And I love that she's willing to engage with the public. And I think that New Hampshire voters should do more of this and bring this out to the forefront. Foreign interference is not something that we want. It's sad that this is something that we still have to deal with, you know, today. But yeah, we all want, want all of us, like the pledge that we just recited, liberty and justice for all, not just those who agree with our specific party, you know? And so that's what I wanted to bring to you. I don't think I, unless you...
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Yes, sir. Same process, sir. Name and address for our records, please.
My name is Peter Friedrich. My address is 407 Amherst in Nashua.
Thank you. Please proceed.
In October, right here in Londonderry, when Tulsi Gabbard was questioned about her support for Indian Prime Minister Narendra Modi despite his involvement in an anti-Muslim pogrom, she snapped back, "Do you know what instigated the violence?" In 1938, after a Jewish teenager assassinated a German diplomat, the Nazis used it as an excuse to stage the first pogrom against the Jews. Today, when we talk about Kristallnacht, our first question is never, "Do you know what instigated it?" Modi's pogrom is the reason he was banned from entering the United States of America for a decade. Many understandably viewed Gabbard's response as a justification of Modi's atrocities. Why would she defend Modi's violence? In 2012, Tulsi Gabbard began receiving heavy campaign financing from the overseas friends of the BJP, the U.S. branch of Modi's religious nationalist political party. That same party was responsible for Modi's pogrom in India. And the OF BJP lobbyists who financed Gabbard are the same people who traveled from America to India to campaign for Modi's election. In 2013, the year before Modi was elected, the BJP was on a mission to get his American visa ban lifted. For that purpose, Gabbard hosted the BJP's president and the BJP's foreign affairs cell chief in DC. Then she turned around and derailed a U.S. House resolution that condemned Modi for his pogrom and supported his visa denial. The clincher came in 2014, when Gabbard keynoted an OF BJP banquet celebrating Modi's election. First, a BJP activist praised her for derailing the resolution and urged people to donate to her. Then the BJP's foreign affairs cell chief discussed her campaign for reelection to a second term. The foreign politician told the American Congresswoman, "Your victory later this year is a foregone conclusion." Then Gabbard posed for pictures wearing a scarf with the BJP logo. The icing on the cake is that Tulsi Gabbard's congressional campaign spent $1,500 to help pay for that foreign political party's event. When America is still reeling from allegations of foreign interference in President Donald Trump's presidential campaign, why would we tolerate this kind of foreign interference in Tulsi Gabbard's congressional campaign? New Hampshire voters deserve to know the truth. And I have a packet of information of about 20 pages related to this that I would like to present to the council.
Sure. You can bring it right up to me. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council under public comment?
Doug Thomas, 143 Mammoth Road, and one of your state representatives here in town. I just wanted to say that a couple of weeks ago, two of your state representatives, myself and Tom Dolan, participated in an annual event up in Concord to help collect the, we call it, the bell ringing of the Salvation Army. And this was started by some of the House representatives to participate in this community event. It was fun. We collected over $1,000 on that one day. Every time slot was covered by some of our representatives. And it was, you know, last year I was the sole participant. This year I was able to get time to come. And I think it was a good deal that the representatives here in town are putting Londonderry forward in this worthwhile event. So we had a good time, and I hope we can get more representatives doing it next year.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council under public comment? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll be moving down the agenda. Appears we have no public hearings tonight. Moving directly to old business, to the budget workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items to bring to your attention this evening. One is you have before you, and also there's handouts up on the table up there, just where we are in terms of the revised default budget and proposed budget. Currently, the default budget is a little over $40,000. Excuse me, the proposed budget's about $40,000 below default, primarily due to the fact that step increases and merit increases will be included in any proposed contract that goes before the voters. As I've explained previously, we're negotiating five contracts this year. And at the next council meeting on the 20th, I'll be giving both the council and the Budget Committee updates on where we stand with those five contracts. It's been my hope all along that we'll be able to move all five of them to the ballot for March. You also have before you just a revised tax rate calculation sheet, which really hasn't had any significant changes to it from our previous discussion. Just want to remind the public that we have the second public hearing on the budget, two weeks from tonight on January 20th. That'll be the last time for the public to weigh in on the warrant before it gets moved to the ballot before deliberative session. So again, that'll be on the 20th, and we'll be publishing that in the paper as well. The deadline for citizens' petitions is January 14th. To date, I've only received one inquiry on the citizens' petition. Again, if anyone is thinking about doing one, while it's not mandatory, I strongly encourage them to allow us to run the language by Attorney Ramsdale first before gaining signatures. And actually, I would just correct myself. I've had two inquiries on citizens' petitions thus far.
Yes, and those that are doing citizens' petitions, please just don't stop at 25 signatures. They have to be verified by the supervisors of the checklist as registered voters. So you're far better served by exceeding that limit. Comfortable number is above 30, but ask people if they're registered voters or if they voted in the last election, so you can be sure you get a proper signature.
And just of note, back on the proposed budget, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our proposed budget right now, as it stands for the following fiscal year, is up 1.75% over the current budget. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, at this point, I want to be really clear about something. We've been discussing on and off all year about revenues. So over the past two weeks, I've been running analysis on the revenue streams of the town and also discussing with folks and seeing what our future pipeline looks like on the commercial revenue side of the business. Our commercial revenue pipeline is significantly less than it has been in the past. We have been very fortunate in raising tens of millions of dollars in commercial revenue to be able to offset costs going forward, over the last 10 years especially. Going forward, we're going to be smart about this and look at other ways to raise revenue. We're also talking to an electric company aggregator so that we can look at how to help all of the 9,000 residents in town get a reduction in their electric bill and looking at different ways to help folks through different avenues to put more money back in the taxpayer's pocket. We did the Taxpayer Relief Act. I know it wasn't a lot of money, but we're going to keep moving in that same direction and have three or four of those initiatives, so they add up to a lot of money. But I want to be really clear. We have to be smart about going forward, because our revenue is not increasing at the same rate as it has been in the past. We are currently at record revenues. So let's be, we just need to keep it all in mind as we're all looking at things going forward. Anything questions?
I think the add-on or the second half of that proclamation that you just made is that what's equally important is that our revenues are not increasing as fast as our spending is. And I think that...
As an overall town, that is correct.
And that creates a problem.
I don't think folks understand, it takes almost $120 million to run the town. So we have really got to be smart about this as the three forms of government, library, school, and town. We've got to be smart going forward. Anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would just ask the Budget Committee, and I know Tim's not here this evening, so maybe you don't know the answer, but when are you all planning on making your recommendations on the warrant articles? Are you...
So at this point, that is typically, we do it at our January meeting. That is also like last year, the night before the warrant is due at 9:00 AM the next day. So I think that's something we still need to talk about and figure out. In the past, we have also done it at the end of the budget hearing for both the school and the town, so that's another possibility. So we'll look into that. Get back to you.
Okay. And it's my hope that we can move the items to the warrant on the same night that we do the public hearing, in two weeks from now.
Okay, so while we're here on Budget Workshop, anybody in the room have any questions about budgets, Budget Workshop? Anything you want to address? Ted?
Just going through our warrant articles, it looks like we're only, we're spending 453, 476 from UFB. Is that correct? Just going down our list, it looks like that's what we're spending. No?
It's about 350.
How much?
350.
350? Okay. I must have taken a number from another spot, then.
Yes, you probably took, if you look at the Cable Capital Reserve?
I didn't take that one.
Well, you got the Town Parking Lot paving, that's 265. Is that staying or going?
Staying. And then there's a 103, 476 for establishing...
So that is not...
Is that labeled wrong?
That's this police detail fund.
Yeah.
We are dissolving the special revenue and making it a revolving fund.
Oh.
So the process for that is we need to dissolve the special revenue fund. That money then goes into the general fund, which then goes back to the revolving fund for the police detail.
It's, yeah, it's more of an, it's not labeled wrong, it's just more of an accounting thing that we have to do to show it. But it's not actually, it's not counting against our UFB.
Okay, so I see 265 in the UFB. I see 15,000. I see 50,000, Capital Reserve Fire Department. I see 20,000 for cemeteries. I see 75,000 for Pillsbury Cemetery. Is that going to come out of the UFB or is that going to go to the ballot?
No, that's going to ballot.
All right, I see 20,000 for GIS. That's going to ballot?
Yep. It's 28,000.
28,000, and that's it. Okay, so we got 20,000, 50,000...
15.
15,000 and 265.
So correct. 350.
Okay.
So where does that leave us with UFB?
Well, for usable amount, it leaves us with about $1 million.
We have over $6 million in the UFB, right?
Correct. On a million of usable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else, questions on the budget? Seeing none.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Not seeing here. As far from the ongoing discussion we've had about the elderly exemption?
Yep.
Could that be an add-on in terms of expenses, whatever we pass coming forward?
Yeah, so the way that works is whatever we decide to do with the elderly exemption, how we plan to increase it, so we are going to come forward with an ordinance proposal on the 20th. We don't have to have it passed before we adopt the budget. The way it works is that it actually shows up against the total valuation when we're doing our forms to the Department of Revenue in the fall. So it's kind of weird the way it works, but it doesn't show up as a credit, if you will, like for instance, you see the veterans exemptions on here. The way the elderly one works is it reduces your total valuation number, which isn't going to affect what's on this sheet, because this is a conservative number anyway.
Yeah, so it's, from an accounting standpoint, it's so far upstream that it doesn't...
It is.
Doesn't affect it. Got it, okay.
The other thing I would mention, though, that we can actually add on to this, I don't see it on here, Justin, is adding in the $200,000 from UFB on this to show the reduction against the tax rate when we go to do that this fall.
And one last question. Justin, did you ever get an answer on, from the DOR, on if we could put a warrant article on to create an account for, we talked about for water, that maybe we could put no money in it or a dollar in it just to establish it?
So I spoke with them about that, and there's, I guess, two routes to go through. The Capital Reserve Fund, they said that you can't create a Capital Reserve Fund for which you do not have authority in. We don't have a water district. We don't have any water communication. It's all through Penachuk and Manchester Water Works, so we wouldn't be able to do that. I've spoken with some other towns, and what they do is they create what is called the, similar to our expendable maintenance trust fund, but for habitats or something of that nature, instead of creating a capital reserve. One of the things that was said is if you're not looking to put money into it, there's no point in creating it without funding it.
So we'd have to at least put a dollar in it if we were going to create it? That would...
You could, but you can't put any other money unless it goes to the vote. So when you create it, you might as well put in additional. But if you'd wanted, you could put in $1, but no matter what happens, that $1 is all that can be in there until the voters vote to put more money in.
Okay, given the calendar we're at right now, how much time do we have to decide that?
It would have to be, yeah...
By next Monday, it'd have to be done?
Correct.
All right. I guess I would...
I'm sorry, two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today. I would just, I guess, ask the council to think about that between now and the next time before time runs out, to see if that's something that we may want to consider in preparation for the outcome, what I'll call, in my words, an upcoming crisis in clean water, starting from the west side of the town and probably moving further east each year, I would think.
So, not to interrupt, the other thing I was told by DRA is you have to be careful with this, because you can't use public funds for private purposes. Even though it's a taxpayer, it's technically a private purpose for that one individual. It doesn't benefit the general. So you'd almost have to create a water district in order to do it.
How, okay, we'd have to create a water district too, then, because I'm thinking that it would be very similar to the sewer fund.
The sewer fund is operated by user fees, though. It's not operated by the taxpayer.
Okay. So it's something to think about. I guess I'm not, I don't have the answers in my head for this, but I'm just thinking of potential solutions to help us deal with this drinking water crisis that we're just starting to understand and to try to mitigate it hitting us really hard down the road, that we somehow try to manage our way into it with some type of a rainy day fund. And I don't know what the right solution is, but...
So, I got an email today about water testing. And I sent this off to Attorney Ramsdale. I had asked some questions about aquifers. I kind of got a roundabout answer from DES. So I asked the question about surface water sampling, and was that done as part of our program? And it was. And from Beaver Brook to Little Cohoes to Musil Pond to Scobee Pond, the PFOA concentration ranged from 9.8 to 42, with a mean of 20.5. So what I'm going to, what I've asked Attorney Ramsdale over the last several weeks is, is let's gather all this information and figure out, what does this mean and does it give us some sort of path?
That's parts per trillion?
That's parts per trillion. So that, so I'm trying to get, we're trying to get our arms around through what legal methods that we had discussed to see, is there a path that we can take? Because when I spoke to DES after they spoke to Kevin, the guy wanted to talk to me directly, I didn't get, I didn't get the clearest of answers. In other words, if the wells are affected, the aquifers are affected. And my argument is the aquifers serve a larger area than the legal line that was drawn. He didn't disagree with me. That's why I asked for the surface water numbers, so that we can, and Attorney Ramsdale's trying to figure out is if, do we have an argument there?
Well, I think that...
That's what we're looking at.
The line that was drawn was not based in any science. It was based on...
What was defensible.
Right.
So that's what I've asked him to look at, so that may come around to answering your question, is that, you know, there may be another way to go about this.
Thank you.
But I don't know the answer to that yet. All right, anything else?
Silly question. What, how much is, how much do we have to cut? Just, is a silly question, like I said, to get to where we were as far as the tax rate last year? What's the difference dollar-wise? I mean, I know I have the numbers here, but I have a calculator on me, I just didn't know if you had that out.
So that's a little bit of a difficult question to answer, because tax rate-wise, we're already lower because of the valuation.
Right, okay, that's right.
So dollar-wise?
I have that number right here.
Is that the one that's in the box down at the bottom there?
Yes.
Okay.
One of the ones in the box.
Sure.
So we would have to cut about 597,000, 597,200, I believe.
And how much of that is benefits?
That I would have to get back to you.
That's the first box, 597, right?
Well, we know how much we went up overall in benefits for the year, right? Do you know what that number is?
Off the top of my head, no.
Thought we rolled that number up. That's what you told me we did in the budgets, is we rolled them up out of the departments.
Yes, but I'd have to go through and take all the health insurances from last year, add those up, all the account lines from there, and subtract.
Chairman knows where I'm trying to go with that.
So what I'm trying to determine is how much of that 591,000 is actually health insurance?
Right.
And I'm guessing it's going to be the majority.
Most of it, yeah.
Well, that, as well as probably, I think it's about 200,000, was the waste management contract.
Right.
So, without going through, and we rolled it all up into one, so next year I'll be able to tell you quicker, but this year I'd have to go for FY '20 and...
I think we more or less know it's uncontrollable costs.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, we good?
Yep.
Moving on. New business, order 2020.01. First order of the year. Mr. Khan.
Yes. Tonight, for order 2020.01, we have three items. The first one is winter maintenance at the town hall, library, police access center, Morrison House, and central fire, for a total of $5,280 for the snow events that we had mainly in December. Next item is at the South Fire Station, that was to repair the dry system in that facility for $1,555. And then winter maintenance up to our senior center, once again, for the events in the second portion of December for $1,510, for a total of $8,345 is what we're looking for tonight.
I entertain a motion to approve.
Real quick question. The contractors that are doing the snow removal complied with your requests on the different salt for the state?
Majority of the time, they're still, still working on a few...
Okay.
Yes, we're gaining.
Motion to, I'll accept a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Order's passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the December 16th and December 23rd minutes together as presented in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Minutes are approved. Do I have any liaison reports tonight? Town manager report. Anything new for the town manager?
Nope.
Anything new for the assistant town manager?
I actually have a couple of things I wanted to mention quickly for our residents. We have an Old Home Day organizational volunteer meeting next Thursday, January 16th, here in Town Hall at 5:30 PM. There's also information about that on our website, and we're going to be posting on social media again, probably tomorrow. And then just a heads up to our residents, and we will also be publishing this on the website and on social media as well, but for anyone watching, we wanted to put out information this year that on Martin Luther King Day, or Civil Rights Day, January 20th coming up, which is actually the day of the next council meeting, Town Hall is open, but the state offices are closed, which means for those folks who intend to come in and do their auto-registration that day, if it's a renewal and you're already in the system, there should be no problems. But sometimes a new registration for a new vehicle, I'm told, can create some problems where our clerks have to call up to the state DMV and they won't be there. So we hate to have people inconvenienced by coming in and then having to leave and come back, so we just want to put that out there for folks, maybe wait a day or two or come another day if possible. If you have any questions about that, perhaps you have that day off and we're hoping to come into the clerk's office, just call the clerk's office ahead of time to run by, you know, run that by them, what you intend to do, and they can probably give you some useful information. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one comment for town manager and assistant. When will the drop-off center open back up again for people in town?
April, what's that, second weekend in April?
Beginning of April, second week of April.
Second week of April, thank you.
It means you have to hold all your stuff until at least, the second weekend is April 11th. I don't know if that was, we're probably more likely, probably more likely the 18th.
I'll get the exact date and I will post it.
Thank you, Yanis.
People do have the option, though, if they're in dire need of making a disposal, they can go to Derry, I believe. Yanis, is that correct?
Yep.
There's a, if you go on the Solid Waste website, there is a link that says where to go when the drop-off center is closed, and you can look up all of the different materials on there to see where you can bring them.
All set? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, the town council meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is January 20th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.